So hello, welcome to the special session on coronavirus nineteen. So this will be organized as more like a round table. We'll have short talks of ten minutes by Sara Del Valle from Los Alamos and Marcelo Gómez from Fio Cruz, Rio de Janeiro.
And Carrie?
And Carrie is just answering questions, Carrie Manor, also from Los Alamos. And then we will open for questions of all kinds of questions are allowed, okay? So.
Marcelo's gonna start.
Okay, Marcelo.
So first of all, is it okay if I put some slides over there? Or you'd rather not?
No, it's because we are being streamlined on YouTube.
Ah, okay, okay.
And this thing is just focusing.
Okay, okay, no problem. So just open up for my sake.
But if the thing is useful, we can.
Okay. See where is the cable here? So what I have prepared here really quickly is just I wanna show you a little bit.
It's that, yeah, that's one, yeah.
So I wanna present to you briefly what is the current protocol in terms of surveillance here in Brazil for the COVID nineteen, so the new coronavirus. So the idea is to show you a little bit how the Ministry of Health and particularly the Secretariat of Health Surveillance have structured the lab centers in each state, what are the protocols, how they are defining what is suspect case for this particular disease, and how they should handle those cases and proceed with lab results. And then I have also prepared a pretty rough estimate, as was discussed by the end of my presentation earlier today, on what is the kind of a risk rank for next invasions in Brazil, assuming that, let's say, that São Paulo become invaded, and then what should we expect to be the next municipalities in Brazil to observe new cases, given that São Paulo started to have local transmission, okay? So how the system has organized itself here in Brazil? So they've established this operations center on public health emergency specifically for this particular disease, and this is under the Health Surveillance Secretariat, under the Ministry of Health, and it involves players from the Secretariat in the Ministry of Health, the National Reference Laboratories for Respiratory Diseases, so it's the Instituto Adolfo Lutz, the Instituto Evandro Chagas, and Fio Cruz from Rio de Janeiro. Those are the institutions, the lab centers, the National Reference Labs Centers that are responsible for actually doing a testing specifically for the new coronavirus. So in the end, they are the ones that will say, well, is this a positive case of the new coronavirus or not for the public health infrastructure here in Brazil, okay? So and then you have the state's central laboratories, which is called the La Sen, so it's the Laboratório Central dos Estados. They are responsible for the first lab test, okay? Those are the places that once a suspect case is identified on a healthcare unit, they will collect the samples at the unit, they will send the sample to the La Sen, so the state laboratory, they will run the first testing, okay? They will run tests for the respiratory viruses that are on the protocol for the surveillance of respiratory infections in Brazil, so basically influenza, SISCO respiratory virus, and a few others. And the recommendation is that, so just let me go quick here. So how is the test structured? So La Sen will test first for the common infections, pathogens for respiratory diseases. If the result is negative for all of those pathogens, then they will be tested by the national laboratory for the new coronavirus. Of course, this has the drawback that we lose co-infection. So let's say that an individual is at the same time infected by influenza and the new coronavirus. Since they will have a positive test for influenza, they would not be tested for the new coronavirus. So why has the Ministry of Health opted for this strategy? Well, it's based on the assumption that co-infection is fairly low in the case of respiratory disease. So this is also something that needs more study, the actual amount of data that we have on co-infection on respiratory diseases is relatively small, so it's not written in stone that it's actually less than five percent, but currently it's what people assume that it is, and that's why the Ministry of Health opted to use that as a guideline. Okay, so going back a little bit here, so how we define suspect case? So we have three criterias, okay, parallel criterias. So one of them is, well, an individual that seeks health care showing signs of fever, and at least one other respiratory symptom, so either coughing, difficulty in breathing, and other common symptoms associated with respiratory infections. If they present both of those symptoms, and they have been recently to one of the areas around the globe that have local transmission, then it is a suspect case, okay? So it's not enough to have the symptoms, because of course, all the other respiratory diseases also share those symptoms. So if the individual have not been exposed to any of those places where we do have local transmission, there's no reason to suspect that this case is from a new coronavirus, since we still don't have local transmission in Brazil. Once we do have local transmission in Brazil, then it's another problem, because then, let's say that São Paulo has local transmission, then if they have been in São Paulo recently, then it's also suspect case, okay? Another possibility is that they have those symptoms, and they have history of close contact with a suspect case from the previous definition, right? Because then if that previous case is a suspect case, and they have close interaction with another person, if the first one is confirmed, the other one have been exposed. So you assume that it's also a suspect case, you do not wait to have a confirmation, to then have to run back and try to recapture, let's say, that other case. And finally, symptoms plus history of close contact with a confirmed case, of course, right? This is, I don't think that we need to go deep into that. So and then what is a confirmed case is a suspect case that have been tested at one of those lab centers, and the lab result came back positive, so simple enough, okay? So this is the difference between a suspect case and a confirmed case, okay? And if the lab result for a suspect case comes back negative, then this becomes a discarded case, okay? So recently, so I've mentioned that as of now, currently, the state laboratories, they only test for the usual protocol for respiratory diseases, and then if it comes back negative, then the National Reference Center tests for coronavirus. Yesterday, the Ministry of Health have announced that they are buying thirty thousand kits for COVID testing to send to the state laboratories, so that the state laboratories themselves can implement the testing onsite. Why is that? Because then you gain timeliness, okay? You don't have to wait to have the negative result, send the sample to one of those reference centers, get tested, and then come back with the result, okay? So it's a case of gaining time, reducing the delay between identification of a suspect case and laboratory confirmation, okay? So this is really a good implementation. So they also developed the website with all the associated information with this disease in Portuguese, of course, this is under the website of the Ministry of Health. This is the go-to place for information associated with this particular disease. So here is the official information, okay? Please don't rely on WhatsApp messaging, Facebook posting, or whatever. This is serious. I mean, we joke about it, but this is really serious, okay? They also have another platform that is specifically for situation report, okay? So the first website is with general information regarding the disease. This particular website is the situation report, okay, both in Brazil and in the world. So they collect data that is published on the WHO to update the Brazilian website, and of course, the local data on suspect cases comes from our own infrastructure, okay? So you have there all the suspect cases, confirmed cases, discarded cases in Brazil, what is the situation around the world, which countries have local transmission, number of suspect cases, and so on and so forth. So again, situation report, you wanna know what's going on, this is the go-to place, okay? So what is the current situation in Brazil? A lot of suspect cases, why? Because we have people traveling, coming back from those countries that have confirmed cases and local transmission. So of course, anyone that came back and showed symptoms, as we've seen, is by definition a suspect case, so this is why we have several, but then when we look at confirmed, only two cases in São Paulo so far. And from these numbers of suspect cases, we can have already a rough estimate of actual risk of case importation, okay? Because those are the places that have the highest number of individuals that have flown back from countries with local transmission, and if a confirmed case is to pop up in Brazil, most likely will be in the ones that have the highest number of suspect cases so far, and you can see São Paulo, it's right there, okay? So again, fake news, I'm finishing in just a couple more slides. So fake news is a serious public health issue, not only for this particular disease, but in general, okay? Why is that? This can lead to the adoption of ineffective treatment, instead of validated health profession-appointed treatment. This can lead to disregard for vaccination campaigns and counter. This can lead to unnecessary rush to hospitals driven by fear alone, causing disruption or even collapse of the healthcare unit's ability to properly tend to those that actually need healthcare at that place, okay? So on the one hand, we have fake news promoting unreliable treatment, and on the other hand, we have fear mongering also running about, and this leads to people that didn't need to seek medical care going there only based on this fear that is being spread. So this is really a public health issue, and we as public health workers, we need to learn how to confront and counter attack this particular problem, okay? And this is something that's still not clear, what is the best way to tackle that? Finally, risk in Brazil. So with respect to fake news, the Ministry of Health also launched a dedicated website to debunk those fake news that are being observed on social media. So I really encourage you to visit this particular website and share those debunkings that are over there, okay? Because fake news spreads really quickly. If we don't spread the counter validated information that shows that particular fake news is in fact fake, how will people know that that prior information is actually wrong? This is our job, okay? So and then what about importation risks? So I went a little bit, the table of suspect case is in itself already a good estimator for risk, so where we should expect to observe the first confirmed cases. And just to give you an idea of why only now have we observed confirmed cases in Brazil? So when it was restricted to China, take a look on the annual number of passengers, airline passengers between China and Brazil, a hundred thousand passengers over the whole year, okay? So about three hundred persons per day on average, and China has a population of over one billion individuals. So when you translate that into the probability of an infected individual flying to Brazil, it gets really low. Of course, you have to balance that with the number of cases, but it's a first approximation, okay? Now compare with the same information when we look at number of passengers from aggregating UK, France, and Denmark, Denmark, no, sorry, Germany, to Brazil, nine hundred thousand passengers per year with a much smaller population, so the probability of an infected individual is higher flying to Brazil. We have the Italian case, okay? Same thing for USA, much, much higher. So once Europe is invaded, or the USA is invaded, then our risk increases dramatically, okay, because of that. Again, mobility pattern, okay? So to have just a comparison, so those European countries, Brazil, nine times the number of passengers from China, in the case of US, twenty-two times higher, with a population that is, in the case of the European countries, seven times smaller, in the case of US, four times lower, okay? Finally, I did an exercise of using that construction of effective distance based on the airline network within the Brazilian territory, with those limitations that I pointed out, okay? This is direct flights and connecting flights that we have to estimate the actual path, okay? So it's not travel information directly, and it's, as I highlighted there, it's only air traffic in the country, it does not include international travels, and it does not include road travels, road trips, okay? So people working, living in a different given city and working or traveling for leisure on other places. And this is basically, you can look at that table and interpret in terms of a ranking of municipalities that are likely, more likely to observe a case if São Paulo starts to have local transmission, okay? So basically, a risk map for the Brazilian territory, for the municipalities in Brazil. And with this, I finished what I had prepared here, and I pass along to Sara.
Thank you. So for the purpose of this meeting, I just wanted to touch on some of the activities that we've been doing in the US in regards to coronavirus, and also to encourage the Brazilian scientific community to follow and perhaps adopt some of the activities that we're doing in the US. So as I mentioned during my talk, as part of the CDC Flu Challenge, there's been a community of mathematical epidemiologists that have been working towards forecasting the flu in the United States, and now because of the coronavirus, the CDC reached out to the math community and the scientific community. They had an open call and said, anyone who's interested in modeling coronavirus and helping the CDC and the US with this problem, you can join a conference call. And so now the CDC has been having weekly conference calls, and there are different working groups that are focusing on different questions and different challenges. One working group is working on forecasting the spread of coronavirus in the United States. Another working group is working on the impact of mitigation strategies. There's another working group working on modeling the hospital capacity and the healthcare resources, and there's another working group working on the international spread, and so how it could potentially spread around the globe, and also how it would spread in the United States. As most of you know, there's already local transmission in the US, so that's why there's a concern about how, concern and also interest in modeling the spread within the US. And I really feel that because they started working on the flu forecasting, they knew some of the researchers that already had mathematical models that could potentially be extended and repurposed for this particular problem, and so I think that other countries should probably also start building the capacity, because when you have a problem like this, you know, the CDC doesn't have all the resources that they would like to have to start modeling all these different aspects and questions that they need to answer. And so by having a community that is focusing on different questions, I think then we can all kind of come together and address these critical problems and global problems. In terms of potential intervention strategies that may be considered to mitigate the spread in the US, and this is part of the pandemic influenza preparedness plans, we think that similar interventions are going to be implemented in the US and perhaps also around the globe, and you all have seen all the different interventions that China had implemented. And so at least in the US, there's consideration for isolation of infected cases, quarantine for suspected contacts and suspected cases. There's also increased hygiene, and this is, a lot of people are buying hand sanitizers, and I don't know if you go to the stores, there's a shortage of hand sanitizers, because everyone is trying to have them handy and to use them all the time. Also travel restrictions, there's travel restrictions from all the countries that have been affected by coronavirus, and also people that are coming from those countries, they have to be in quarantine for fourteen days. And then in addition to that, there's probably going to be considerations of school closures, and also something that probably affects the mathematical and the scientific community, there's many conferences that have been canceled because of coronavirus, and at least I know several myself that were going to be happening in April, and there's probably going to be more as the spread increases, I think there are more conferences will be affected and perhaps canceled. And so another thing that I wanted to highlight is that, at least in the US, there's several agencies, government agencies, that have been providing funding to researchers so that they can start modeling coronavirus, and so from NSF, NIH, the CDC, and other government agencies that are interested in getting help to answer different questions. And so I think that's all I wanted to mention, but I think it would be important for all of us to think about how we can create this community of modelers that can help, you know, places like Fio Cruz and others when new emergencies occur.
I'll say one thing. So one interesting thing from a mathematical modeler perspective is that, you know, it's not clear yet, and I think maybe that was one of the working groups too, it's not clear yet exactly what the parameter values are going to be for coronavirus, right? And when you look at, I mean, it just happened, actually, that one of my graduate students was working on trying to get parameter values for all the major influenza-like illness viruses, including coronavirus, which seasonal coronavirus creates influenza-like illness. And so she looked, did a huge sweep of the literature for the seasonal coronaviruses, and also SARS and MERS, which are coronaviruses, and even from that, there's really wide parameter ranges from past coronavirus outbreaks, right? So it's hard to narrow that down, and we're starting to get some data that is helping people to narrow it down, but then it's really hard to tell the difference between which people have been between which people have been talking about here, the actual intrinsic properties of the virus versus the social demographic stuff that's happening that's forcing that, right? Are people contacting each other a ton because they're in a certain place? Are they, is there other factors that are leading to higher death rates in certain places? We don't know, you know? And we're trying to figure that out and we can have estimates and we can think about different scenarios. Like if we're in this zone, we think this is going to happen. If we're in this zone, we think this is going to happen. But that's a big problem for the modeling right now. It's a new virus. We don't have, the past data is really broad for coronaviruses, so we don't know exactly where it's going to land among the viruses that we already know about. So it's an interesting mathematical problem in that sense, too.
Thank you. So. Thank you. So we are now open for questions. So comments, questions, and so on.
I have listened to different and very different figures about what's the lethality of the coronavirus. So what's your opinion about that? And in comparison with the flu? Because some people say that the word is exaggerating about the fear to the coronavirus. But the most conservative number I have heard from New York Times was that it is about four times more lethal than the usual H1N1, so.
Okay. So it is different than the flu. And so that's one of the things that we all, we want to make sure that people understand that this is, it's a different virus and it seems to have very different properties than previous coronaviruses. And it seems to be behaving different than the flu. One thing we know for sure is that the mortality rate in populations, in older populations like 65 or even 50 and older appears to be higher. And it's, and as the, as people get older, I mean, the older, the older the population, the higher the mortality rate. And also people with pre-existing conditions also appears to be way higher than what it is for flu. And so, I don't know, that's what I kind of wanted to say.
So this is a good summary of the situation. So it's, again, we are still, as Kelly mentioned, early, relatively early in the game to actually have good and accurate numbers even for lethality. So right now, it's, as you mentioned, of the order of estimations ranging from 2% up to 4%. And again, there is a huge difference in age, as Sarah mentioned. And but, and again, it's not only that, and this is already way higher than H1N1, for instance, okay? Even if it's 2%, it's already way higher, okay? And also, not only that, you have also that this, if it manages to become endemic in the population, it's another agent in the pool of respiratory diseases that our public health system will have to take care and with relatively high mortality. So you can think, oh, well, 2% is, it's low. No, it's not low. 2% is not low at all, at all, at all, okay? Imagine if you have 100,000 cases or 10,000 cases, we're talking about 200 deaths. It's not low at all, okay? 2% depends on what, 2% of what, okay? Of deaths? Yeah, it's not low, okay? And I think that in terms of burden for the public health, it's also quite worrisome if it becomes endemic.
Briefly, the one other piece that makes it challenging to compute that is that I don't think we still know quite what the asymptomatic rate is or low symptom rate, you know? So that, so it could be that many more people were infected than we realize and then maybe that would make the total death rate go down. But at this point, we can't say because we don't know, because we don't know.
Sorry, I'm not part of the scientific group, but I'm a journalist. And last week, there was a professor from Harvard School, Harvard Medical School. And he, some news in Brazil, they published what he said about, he was estimating that the coronavirus could reach something between 40% and 70% of the worldwide population. And it was not clear how he got these numbers. And from what I could understand of what you are saying, you can't do this mathematical model now because you don't know a lot of things about the coronavirus. So what, how can we read this kind of number?
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's a spiky one. So, well, this is my personal opinion and my personal take as a modeler, okay? And I am of the opinion that diseases like that and diseases, several examples of infectious diseases, particularly in the case of respiratory diseases, to make long-term prediction is tricky, okay? So I wouldn't do it. I'm not, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be done and we shouldn't believe in those numbers. I'm only saying that I wouldn't do it, okay? Because I think it's risky to do that because, and why is that? It's because as the epidemic advances, people change their behavior. And this has impact in the number of cases, okay? So how can I, again, my opinion, okay? My personal opinion. How can I do a forecast of, let's say, one year, assuming that nothing will change in terms of human behavior? Or in terms of travel restrictions, school closures, and so on and so forth? There are several mitigation actions that could be placed forward from different countries, different territories, that would impact the ability of this virus to propagate itself in the human population. And this would pretty much throw a wrench in your model results. So I would take it with a grain of salt, as we say, okay? And well, again, pointing out something that has been mentioned before, it's still early in the game in terms of disease parameters for those kinds of models. So I would rather focus on short-term prediction in terms of model, like two weeks, four weeks, things like that, not go as far as when it finally wanes out. There are so many things that could affect the dynamics that it's tough. Me personally, nothing, because I have a model there, okay? But if I have to risk, I.
What can be said? I mean, I know, we know that it is very difficult to make forecasts about the future, right? So but what can we say with these mathematical models about the coronavirus rather than saying that this is very difficult to make estimates?
So if I have to risk it, I would say that we are only in the beginning. We are only at the beginning of this evolution. No, 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 I'm saying in terms of number of cases. Okay, so I think at this point, especially now that it has invaded Europe, it looks like it has started to invade the USA, it becomes harder and harder to control. And so we should expect spread to more and more countries as time goes by. So in the next few weeks, I would bet that we will see new other countries that so far haven't shown any confirmed cases to present confirmed cases. Brazil might have new confirmed cases, not only in Sao Paulo, maybe in other cities that are important points of entry in terms of international flow. This is what I can say at the moment. This is the only thing that I, I'm willing to honestly risk myself.
So I'd just like to say that beyond forecasting, I think that what you can do with a mathematical model is to explore multitudes, scenarios, and to actually use the models not to try and pinpoint where the next new cases will be or when or how many, but actually to say, if we have this scenario, then these interventions will be the most effective. If we have that scenario, then those interventions would be the most effective.
For example?
So, for example, okay, so we don't know yet if the role of asymptomatic infection in spreading coronavirus. So it could be that, I believe there have been some reports of following an infection, patients actually getting another coronavirus infection. If that's asymptomatic, then what you've got is an RSV-like transmission pathway, which will be much harder to control. In which case, the sort of modeling you'd want to do is to say, in some ways, you have to accept that it's going to invade into the population. And what you want to do is have strategies that will make the peak later and lower and more spread out so that the health system can actually cope with the cases as they come in. And to also focus resources on risk groups, high-risk groups. And there is some information on the mortality rates being higher in certain risk groups. So that's one scenario. Another scenario is that you assume that it, that the asymptomatic infection plays a smaller role in the transmission. In which case, you could, you would be more looking at containment strategies because you would be able to identify a large percentage of all the new cases. In which case, you would be looking at options for quarantining, social distancing, to actually force the epidemic to fade out and die out. And that would be a kind of SARS-like scenario. So at this point, because we don't know, that's the reason why mathematical modeling is so useful. Because you can try a whole bunch of reasonable guesses of the range of what might be and come up with strategies in advance that would suit each scenario before it happens. And as you get more information, you then select from those strategies.
Yeah. So you, so following up on what Lisa said, I, yeah, you know, we can measure the impact of different mitigation strategies. Like I mentioned before, isolation, quarantine, you can say, you know, what if we're able to detect only 10%? What if we can detect 50%? And you can play with the different parameters because, you know, you don't really know exactly how many cases you're going to be able to detect. And based on all those different scenarios, you can see how much you, it would spread. But one other thing that I wanted to add, which I think you cover the Harvard estimate pretty well, is that we also need to understand that the way coronavirus is spreading in China, it may be very different than how it could spread in other parts of the world because it's a different culture, different populations, different behaviors. And so just, you know, we can't say this enough that we're at the early stages of the spread. And so just because of how we're observing the spread in China, it doesn't mean that it's going to spread the same in other countries. And just like Marcelo said, the only thing we can predict is that there will continue to be spread and especially in the US. I mean, it's already spreading locally. So we're, we will be, we should be seeing more new cases on a daily basis and it will continue to spread to other countries.
Thank you. So I know that the European Center for Diseases, I have here the number, but this is a little hard. Many institutions are calling PhD and people to form groups to modulate coronavirus. At the moment, you say about CDC, Fiocruz, everybody, I think, is thinking about this. No, reflection, no? I think about when it was the Ebola, many people complained that the information was not shared enough as it wasn't necessary at this moment. What I think is that there are many things that you can do if you have the information. For example, about the transmission process, that you don't know a lot about this, is very important, the information you have about cases and the way they acquire the infection. Then I hope that all these groups that are trying to study share not only the information about the cases, but also the ideas and what. I think this is the point, no? It's my opinion. I don't know if we will be able to do it.
And so at least for coronavirus, there is a GitHub website that's been set up with all the data. There's spreadsheets from, you know, China and from other parts of the world. And people are volunteering their time to compile the data and provide the data. There's also information about transportation networks within China and other types of information that people are posting on a daily basis. You know, it's publicly available for anyone to, for any researcher to take and do something with it. So I can share the GitHub link later if anyone is interested in looking at the data that's been posted on a daily basis. They're also compiling papers. And as you all know, there's been an explosion of papers posted on archive, which also, going back to kind of like the fake news, you know, we need to be careful because a lot of those papers have not been peer reviewed. And so a paper could be estimating that, you know, everyone will get infected and die. And so you need to take that with a grain of salt because we're at the early stages, we don't really know. And so with models, we can make any assumptions and get any kinds of results. But you need to just make sure that the data that you're getting from those papers appears to make sense and that it could be useful.
Just to wrap it up, I think it was pretty well summarized in terms of data sharing. So we are seeing quite a good and strong push to open access to this data, which is wonderful. In terms of PhDs, postdocs, and forming groups, unfortunately for us here in Brazil, we couldn't be at a worse time for that because we are losing fellowships. We are having a very difficult time getting, meaning keeping the students, grad students, keeping postdocs because we have less and less fellowships. We are seeing centers losing researchers that are retiring and the positions are not being replaced. And so this poses a difficult scenario for researchers in Brazil to tackle that particular problem because of lack of workforce, basically, for research, research workforce. Well, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go that far. Because, well, I am currently working with the respiratory surveillance in Brazil. And the people that are, in fact, working there, they currently, they have a pretty, in a sense, at least at some levels, open mind for specific emergencies that they realize that, well, there were emergencies that we should, and especially in this scenario that, as Sarah mentioned, the world health pushed forward this, let's say. this, let's say, sorry, this willingness to share the data. And if Brazil would go in the opposite direction, this would not only be a problem for us, we would not be, the researchers would not be the only one complaining. We would see complaints from the WHO, from other very respectable centers for public health, like CDC, European CDC and so on, or at least individual researchers of some weight. They would also push out, this is not how we will handle this particular emergency. So I wouldn't bet that we will be closing our lead on our own dataset for this particular emergency because of the global scenario, okay?
I wasn't sure where to throw this in. But in potentially good news, it seems like in the place where it originated, the number of cases is going down and things seem to be getting somewhat under control. And, you know, again, I can't predict the future. But it also shows that there is possibility for people to come in and do something and make an impact and start to make the cases go down. So it's not like, you know, there's nothing we can do. There's things that we can do, right? And people, they have managed to come in and maybe they responded a little later than they should have, but they came in and they're doing stuff and it's having an impact. And that's a good thing. So I don't want people to just be like, well, we're all doomed. Because there are things that we can do to make it better.
We know that in Brazil and other countries, but mainly in Brazil, Marcelo must have this data, like influenza is circulating among the population much more commonly during winter. And now we are in the summer period. We had two imported cases. We don't have local transmission confirmed yet. I'd like to know if you guys have some evidence of local transmission in a tropical country in the southern hemisphere? And especially for Marcelo, if the Minister of Health is preparing some much worse scenario during the winter or still don't have any kind of action for that period?
Okay, so let's go by parts. So Australia already have local transmission. So that answered the first question. Yes, it is possible. And it's still on the same page. During the 2016 season, influenza season here in Brazil, which I mentioned that was a particularly high activity that was observed in our country, it started really early. And it started early in Sao Paulo, in fact. So it's not that just because we are still in the beginning of March that this in itself would pose a strong barrier. No, no, no. And in fact, since we are still in the beginning of the local transmission in other countries that have a strong flow with Brazil, we expect that as we move closer to the beginning of our winter, we will see more and more cases being imported to Brazil. And then we will be on the, let's say, perfect season for it to spread itself in the country. Hopefully, by that time, we will be in a situation that we know a lot more about the disease. We know about effective mitigation strategies and so on and so forth. So again, as I was saying, it's not the end of the world, okay? But I wouldn't use the fact that we are still in the beginning of March to say that we are safe. No, okay? We have seen in the past from influenza that we can have an outbreak starting in Brazil by the beginning of March. Okay, that already happened in the past. And yeah, that's pretty much it, I think.
I just wanted to sort of mention that at the moment, we don't have a vaccine. We don't have a treatment. So it's basically us as a species against this virus. And I think in that case, it means that we all have to work together from every sector. And I think it's really good that we have someone from the press here because the intervention strategies, I'd like to ask the panel what they are in detail. But I suspect that they are all about social distancing and changing our behavior. So how do we communicate that to people efficiently? How do we convince people to follow those strategies? And how, you know, the models are hopefully going to inform which ones are going to be most effective? And also, learning from other countries where the epidemic has spread, even though the situation may be different, there's still something to learn from those and to project from those countries, how those sorts of strategies would work in a slightly different setting. So I just wanted to bring that up and to hear more about what is currently in our artillery that we can use against coronavirus right now.
Yeah, so in the absence of pharmaceutical interventions, we can rely on non-pharmaceutical interventions. And I mentioned during my talk, some of the things that we have considered. The first thing that I encourage everyone is to wash their hands all the time. We can't, you know, use hand sanitizer if you don't have access to water and soap. Also, social distancing, you know, I don't think coming together was, it's a good mitigation strategy right now. You know, as I mentioned, many conferences have been canceled because of the need to not bring people together. Because once you bring people together, especially from other countries, you are increasing the risk of importation. And so not a good idea. But, you know, school closures are also, you know, a way to mitigate the spread because as many studies have shown, kids tend to be, tend to have a higher probability of infection because they lick each other, they kiss each other. You know, they're always, they're in more close contact than adults. You know, we tend to keep our distance and children tend to just, you know, share everything. They share food or, and so then they tend to transmit diseases more easily than adults. And then they bring them home. And then they bring them to, and then people get sick and so on and so forth. Obviously, some of the recommendations by the CDC right now include, you know, isolation of infected people, quarantine, which is all, you know, non-pharmaceutical. They're also recommending the use of face masks for people that are infected. I, although this is not recommended by the CDC, I tend to recommend the use of face mask, even if you're not infected, because there's several studies that have shown that we touch our faces hundreds of times on an hourly basis. And I've been noticing myself because I don't want to touch my face. And then all of a sudden, I find myself, you know, resting on my hand and I'm like, ah! And so just things of that. If you have a face mask, then you are less likely to put your hands in your mouth and your nose, which is how you get infected. And so just trying to maintain a good level of hygiene, I think, would be really important. And I don't know if you guys...
Piggybacking on that slightly is, which you kind of got to is, then as part of the community, when you are feeling sick, try to stay home if you can, like those kinds of things, right? Try to stay home if you do have to go somewhere. Wear a mask, cough into your elbow, not into the world or the people in front of you. Also, use hand sanitizer a lot if you're sick and that kind of thing. So it kind of goes, yeah, it kind of goes in both ways. You know, if you have the option, call in sick from work or work from home or something like that if you're feeling symptoms. And that's true not only for coronavirus, but just for the standard flu season, right? So are you saying, yeah, so are you saying, can we make use of past outbreaks, like past new virus strains, even if it was a flu virus strain or a new strain, to say, like, can we glean some information about how we might expect this to spread? And I think that probably we can with the caveats that, of course, you know, all the viruses have different innate characteristics, right? But that's something that people have been asking about, like, can we use some machine learning type things or something by putting together a whole bunch of new outbreaks or a whole bunch of, and see if we can match it up to the one that it's looking closest to? And I think that's a really interesting idea. I don't, I don't have all that data of all the past outbreaks in the world and all their spatial spreads sitting there. Maybe someone does. It would be a smart thing to have ready for future things and maybe to start working on now. And maybe some people are, then I don't know. And I think some folks from the CC group have done some estimations of like, of arrival time using some of that thing, where they would expect. And of course, it's in terms of probability because there's randomness to how people are traveling. We can't say exactly who. But they have, there have been produced some predictions about arrival time to each country that they can then compare to what they see actually happening. I don't have those exact results on the top of my head, but I think they're posted somewhere.
Yeah, but the velocity, it corresponds to the reproductive number. And so we have estimates of the reproductive number. You know, it's most of, you know, for China, it obviously is going to be different for different countries just because their reproductive number has, you know, the contacts and how many contacts you have. And so obviously, China has very large cities and the number of contacts you would expect it to be higher than for other areas. And then just cultural and behavioral aspects that will contribute to the reproductive number. You know, I suspect that in Italy, the behavior is different than in China. And so, yeah, there are, and there are ways and there are like groups that are already estimating the rate of spread.
Just, I think the idea is pretty sound, as was mentioned here, to try to compare. Just we have to always keep in mind this particularity of, as we've discussed yesterday and today, the social characteristic of each different place changes how the disease, the same disease, spreads in each region. So this is one thing that we have to keep in mind when we use data from different localities to apply in another one, okay? So directly take into account, let's say, well, if it takes, let's say, two weeks in a given country, it doesn't necessarily mean that it will also take two weeks in Brazil because of those particularities, to those social differences, okay? And also, another important thing that also is, also affects this speed of the actual invasion. So because we have importation and invasion. Importation is just, okay, a video that is infected and arrived but didn't manage to spread to others. And invasion is after we have imported case and manages to infect others locally, okay? Places that have more, a higher mobility will have a higher exposure. So they'll have potentially more, a higher number of imported cases arriving more or less at the same time. And this facilitates the invasion process. And so this could also alter the speed in which we go from the first few imported cases to local transmission, okay? So just to point out a few of the issues that we have to keep in mind. But still, it's something that makes sense and should be, could be explored, definitely.
The amount of asymptomatic infection there is, which we don't know. So the invasion and establishment in a new location, if you imagine this location being bombarded by imported cases, not all of which we will observe, it's much easier to observe imported cases if they have symptoms. So if you can imagine for every one symptomatic case you find and isolate and therefore sort of pretty much stop. If there are, if there's another one that's asymptomatic that continues, then that's a very different situation from if there's another 10 or if there aren't any asymptomatic cases. So I think in terms of finding similarities, those are the qualities of the disease that you need to understand in order to determine that the potential for something to invade and establish the population.
More questions? Oh, okay. Yeah, it's better with the mic because we are recording.
So I've got a curiosity, actually. And I'm not sure if there is a quick answer for this. But it looks like this is a problem with no precedence. And, I mean, there is a really large number of people and probably that's going to be more. And this is an RNA virus, which is really likely to mutate. And as we know from the previous cases in Brazil, both were sequenced and there were mutations found in both of them. And we could distinguish them because of those mutations, which means that probably mathematic models wouldn't work as robust as we could imagine because there would be a lot of selective pressure. And, I mean, temperature, humidity and a lot of things like that could be variables important for the model. So what do you think about it? Do you think it's going to be like really easy to understand globally this virus as time passes? Or it would be like a challenge, solve it and another challenge appears and another challenge, so another challenge appears?
So, let's see. First of all, yes, we, well, we still, again, as we've been repeating ourselves, we still don't know how fast is the mutation rate for this particular virus is there. But as is there for other respiratory viruses. And what we have to keep in mind is that not all mutations will lead to different characteristics in terms of transmission, okay? This is one thing that we have, have to keep in mind. The, the fact that it does present mutations doesn't necessarily mean that will change its ability to spread in the human population pretty quickly, okay? It might, but then again, it might not, okay? And we honestly don't know at this point, okay? And then, what else?
Well, so you mentioned that mathematical models wouldn't necessarily be useful if the, if the virus mutates. And actually, I disagree with that because we, you know, we study HIV, we study flu, and these viruses are changing continuously. And mathematical models are still able to inform, to, to understand and inform and forecast the spread of, of those kinds of viruses. So, I think it, it would be fine. And that is the beauty of mathematics, that can be adapted to any, any changes. And so, obviously, you would need to change the parameters because once it mutates, it might have different characteristics. And, and so, that shouldn't really be a problem. And, and with the flu, I mean, we are able to forecast the flu even though every year we have a different strain. So, I, I don't really think we, we have to be concerned about that. And so far, it seems to be mutating very slowly. So, I think that is a good, it's a good thing. It's not like, you know, other viruses like HIV that is changing very rapidly. So, the fact that it's changing slowly, it could be good because then we can perhaps develop a mitigation, a vaccine and, or some treatment for it. Well, so, I mean, there are many different ways. Usually, the susceptible population, you know, you reach a number of susceptible that, what is that terminology? When, basically, because the number of, of, so the way we contact each other, it kind of follows a power law distribution. And so, you know, you, you, as, as the epidemic spreads, exhaust, that's exactly, yeah. It exhausts the susceptible population. And obviously, there's going to be more people that are susceptible. But because you, the, because the number of, of, because we have a finite number of contacts, then, you know, the epidemic reaches a peak and then it eventually starts to decrease because of exhaustion of, of susceptible people. Also, another way to end is if you have a vaccine. And so, basically, you can, you can start vaccinating people. And so, you can stop the spread of, of a virus. You can also do it through mitigation strategies, which is what they did for SARS. You know, they implemented, there was a lot of quarantining and identification of contacts. And so, they were able to, to stop the spread. So, there are many different ways to, to stop.
Just a quick, a quicker point that I'd like to add is that when, when SARS mentions the exhaustion of, of susceptible individuals, that doesn't mean that there is no susceptible individuals anymore, that everybody is infected. No, no. It's just that it's low enough for the disease not being able to sustain its transmission, okay? Just, just to make it clear.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to add to that, that the, that this concept is called herd immunity. And the number of susceptibles that need to have been infected in order to slow and stop the spread of the disease, the, basically, the lower the R zero, the lower the potential for the disease to spread, the fewer people have to have experienced the disease in order for it to die out. Which is why if you deploy mitigation strategies, you have, at the end of such an outbreak, you have fewer people who have experienced the infection than without a mitigation strategy.
Taking this point, I was wondering about something that W A J O have been saying all this, sorry, past press conference. They always say that's still possible to contain the, the disease. And, and they use some examples to say that. For example, I think Singapore, they, they had a lot of cases and they, they don't have new anymore, or at least a very short new cases. And China, because China has more, about 80,000, and now they have like 200 new cases per day. So, I was wondering if that's because they have this extension of the, the new susceptible? I don't think so, of course, because they have more than 1 billion people. But they managed to stop the, the new infection. So, do you think that maybe what W A J O have been saying is, is feasible? And Sarah mentioned about the kids. And I, I was reading the C D, the Chinese C D C report. And they said that less than 1% of the infected are children. So, also again, could be, could be a problem, the children, because maybe they are asymptomatic or, I don't know, they, or they have some kind of protection?
So, the first part of the question was about containing it. And I think, yeah, so there's precedent, as we said, like, it seems like, it seems like China is containing it. It seems like Singapore is containing it. So, I don't think it's that it can't, I, so I think it's not that we can't contain it. It's that it is quite a few places, so it's going to take a lot of effort to do that. And people have to be very vigilant and they have to be testing and we have to be like on top of it. Because if we don't, if we're not on top of it, then it will, it will spread, for sure. So, I think there's precedent for that, which is a good thing. And so, we shouldn't give up. We should keep trying because I think we can. But certainly, it has popped up in a lot of places, so it's going to take concerted effort. I think, this is my personal opinion, it's going to take concerted effort to do that. But it is possible. And especially if everyone kind of comes together and starts being careful and starts washing their hands and doing all that kind of stuff to help out with the other efforts. I, I think it's, you know, it is possible.
And I don't think it was necessarily herd immunity that stopped the spread in China and Singapore. It was the very drastic and, and concerted intervention strategies. I mean, China closed school, workplaces, everything. This is something that, that had never, you know, happened before. And, and as you know, many, the, the supply chain has been disrupted because China decided to make, to take drastic measures. But it seems like those measures actually helped. And, and so, there's different ways, as I mentioned earlier, to mitigate the spread. You know, you can do it through herd immunity, but then that needs to spread a lot. Or through concerted and drastic mitigation strategies, such as what China and Singapore did. Yeah. Exactly, yeah. And as far as the children, yeah, it appears that actually coronavirus has not really been affecting children very much. And I, and I think that's, that is a good thing because children have a more weak, weaker immune system. And so, the fact that they, you know, they're not affected, I think it could be a positive thing.
But you, but you make a good point that we don't know if that's because they're not getting it or because they're asymptomatic or what.
One question?
Just a comment on this point, like, as she said, in her words, or close to that, like, China has more than 1 billion people. And definitely, it's not, we are not considering the case that everybody's going to become immune. But the virus does not see frontiers, yeah? And within the country, you also have connectivities and some areas. So, the focus of the disease is just located in, in the province of Wuhan, yeah? So, then if in that location you have a number of susceptibles reduced to a certain level, then if you control the importation and exportation of cases, you can control the disease. You, you don't need to reduce the number of susceptibles in the whole country, yeah?
Right, that's, that's a good point. Is that, and presumably, that'll be some of what might be happening other places, is you control it in that town or in that county and try to keep people from, from spreading it on from there, yeah?
Okay, thank you for giving me a chance. I want to know if this, this, this is, is, if people is catched by this one? And if they get some treatment at the beginning, they can recover or just they will die? Or, for example, if they come from China to Sao Paulo? And at the beginning, for example, because they travel like from Europe like 1, 12 hours? And then even they come here in Sao Paulo, if they don't show the, the symptom, maybe they have it, but if the symptom is like fever, like if it's not happen? So, it's, it's the chance to spread. So, if this happen, how can be controlled? Or if people are confirmed, the case confirmed, but if the disease is not spread? Or the case is, if the, 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 the disease is not highly infected the person? Maybe he can recover or what, what will, I don't know? If it's infected, just he will die?
I'm not totally sure I understand. So, you're saying that some people could be coming from a place that has transmission? They might come here and then they don't have any symptoms and they could be spreading it without realizing it? That's what you're asking? Yeah, I mean, that's, that's an issue. And so, that's why like some countries and some places have been putting into effect, if you just got here from one of those countries, even if you don't have symptoms, please stay home for two weeks and be extremely careful with hand washing and all this stuff just in case you are transmitting even if you don't have symptoms. So, I think for a lot of countries, they are suggesting that maybe, I don't know if they're requiring yet, or just suggesting that people kind of self-quarantine if you're coming back from a country with transmission, just in case that you've been exposed and you're asymptomatic. And so, anyway.
But if the case is confirmed, confirmed? For example, if I'm infected by the disease, then I will just, my probability in the future is to die or I will, if I get treatment?
Oh, no. No, even if you're, even among the confirmed cases, the mortality rate is something like 1 to 4%. The number that keeps coming up is somewhere between 1 and 2%, but some are lower and some are a little higher. And so, who knows? But so, so, and it depends on your age and, and existing conditions, you know? So, so really, even if you're a confirmed case, there's a good chance that you won't die, which is good. And if you're confirmed, presumably, they're now keeping track of you and you're in a healthcare system and you're in a place where you can get the best, hopefully, the best healthcare possible if you do get very sick, right? So, but no, if you're confirmed, there's a lot of confirmed cases that, that they're, they're fine now.
The mild cases about 8%.
Yeah, but it's, so it's still a high death rate relatively, but it's, but that's still, you still have more of a chance of surviving than not, by a bit.
So, that gets just the, if the, 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 that or how, that can you put the range of this at the time you're not infected today?
How long from infection to when you would die? Hmm, there's some numbers on that, but I don't know it off the top of my head, what those days are for the people who do die from, I mean, but they progress through very severe respiratory symptoms, right? Where it's, and it takes a little bit of time to heal up. I don't know, I can't remember. I think they released some numbers for that, but I, I don't know what that, I don't know. Yeah, it's some days, but, you know? Sorry, I don't know.
The serial interval, so the, which is not exactly what you're asking. The serial interval is more related to, to, to how long a person can transmit the disease is of the order of five days, more or less, okay? How long until death, in case that evolves to death? As Kayla said, I really have no idea at this moment. But this more or less gives you a, a basic timeline that after five to, to five days, one week after symptoms, usually if you evolve, like most people evolve to, to, to a clearance or so, so that you are, you are cleared and, and you're healthy again, it's about a week or two, two weeks. So, usually, that's the scenario. And we have, the percentage of mild cases is of the order of 80%. So, it's, it's quite high. So, you have both sides of the coin. You have this 2%, between 1 to 4% death rate, which is something of importance. But then again, we have about 80% of mild cases, which is pretty good, okay?
But if these, the, 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 we don't know.
At this point, we don't know. We honestly don't know.
The, the, the human population is still be the main, that's, that's transmission of the disease? Or there is some, I don't know, the dogs, the cats?
Yeah, and also, as, as from, from what I can, can remember right at the moment, as far as pets, it's, it doesn't seem to be an important factor. I mean, there is this suspect case of a dog, but it's, it's a particular case and, and it's not even clear, at, at, at least as far as I remember, what have, what went on in that particular case. As of now, it seems that direct human transmission is the main driver for this disease to spread within humans. So, it, it came probably from, from bat and, and that, that might be an intermediary host that enabled for it to jump from the bat, this intermediary host, and then humans. Now, the propagation between humans, it's believed to be mainly due to directing human interaction, at, at least as, as far as I can remember.
And just, just so you know, bats are reservoirs of a lot of coronaviruses and many, many other, other diseases. And it's, it's still not clear why they carry a lot of stuff, but they, they are not really affected by, by, you know, by these viruses and, and diseases. So, we just, I think this also talks about, you know, the, the changes that we've made into the environment and how we're interacting with, with wild animals. And so, we need to make sure that we, we respect and protect their, their environment so that we don't come in, in contact with them. Because this is how many diseases have been spread and is, is through the, because we're kind of invading their environments and coming in contact with, with wild animals that, that should have been kept to, to the forest and, and other areas. And so, that's just something for us as humans to think about.
Oh, I was going to ask- I was going to ask, does Brazil have a strategy for increasing vaccination coverage for flu and other respiratory diseases to make it easier to identify new coronavirus cases?
Excellent question. I'm very glad that you brought it up, because I had completely forgotten to mention it. So the Ministry of Health declared that they will anticipate the flu vaccination campaign in Brazil. Hopefully, the idea is that if we manage to avoid a large number of influenza cases, since they share the same symptoms, it will make it easier to identify coronavirus cases. That's the main reasoning behind it. And this is something that, yes, the Ministry of Health is considering. I can't remember right now what is the timetable that they are planning, but they are planning to anticipate the flu vaccination campaign in Brazil. Absolutely, 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 absolutely. I mean, we have, I mean, our lab staff resources in Brazil, those state labs that I mentioned, the LaSens, they already have a lot of pressure due to the number of workers that they have, so the size of their staff, the amount of machinery that they have to run those tasks, the number of kids that they have. So if we manage to avoid the workload due to other diseases, this is very good for the system itself and its ability to give answers to coronavirus.
Which also clears up resources in a hospital and doctor setting as well. Right? So that they can focus on maybe the people who might need it the most.
So I encourage everyone to get vaccinated, get the flu vaccine. You know, many people say, "Well, I never got the flu, so I don't really need to get vaccinated." And I think it's imperative that you get the flu vaccine, because it not only reduces your probability of infection, it can also reduce your probability of hospitalization, it can reduce your probability of dying. So it is, and now, during the coronavirus situation, if you want to help the healthcare capacity, then get the flu vaccine.
Regarding what he says about Wuhan and what they are doing, regarding what we are doing to control the disease. Wuhan has a very strong quarantine, so it is expected that if we don't get out and we can't be in touch with the disease, we will not be ill, and then this is the epidemic unless we reduce. But I guess, and please correct me, the disease is not only in the city of Wuhan, but it's only China, the world cities of China, or most of the city of China. So, and there also, the diseases, the disease cases are reducing. But they are not so strong quarantine campaign like Wuhan. So they are, I guess, they're just quarantine of the people that is infected. Could be, that is the case. So I guess we can control the disease. We are just, we have to control the people that is infected and with the situation like they are doing here in Brazil, and then we will stop. Of course, if there is asymptomatic cases, we are in a problem. But I guess it's not the situation, because if China can control it with this scenario or this quarantine, or the quarantine of just the cases, then asymptomatic cases are not so important, maybe.
Maybe. I think that's a good point. And one other thing, from my understanding for the situation in China, is they have a really good feel for where people are traveling from and to within the country. So once they realized that this was a problem, they were, I think they were very aggressive about finding people who had come from Wuhan all over the rest of China, and tracking them down, and saying, "Yeah, you need to be in quarantine, and you need to stay away, and anyone you contacted needs to be careful." So I think, you know, that's an important aspect of it. And it's also an argument for maybe having, you know, some things like airline data and stuff, so we can understand in a general way how people are moving around the country. So we can be like, "You, please, stay away from people." But yeah.
So it's quite late already, so I think we will be closing this session. Would you like to comment on something else?
Well, I would just reiterate that, you know, if you want, if you can avoid large crowds, and you know what, and also always wash your hands, get vaccinated, just try to do everything you can in the absence of pharmaceutical interventions. We can change our behavior, and we have the power to actually mitigate the spread of coronavirus and other respiratory infections such as flu.
In the same line, so if we can say that something good can come out of it is exactly a behavioral change for healthier lifestyle and lifestyle that are, during emergencies like that, people are aware and actually enforce behavioral changes that lower the transmissibility. So if something good can come out of it, is this. So change in the population perspective and actually action during emergency, public health emergencies.
So, okay. So thank you again for this nice discussion. So we are done for today. And tomorrow, again, at 10:00 AM, we start our last day. Thank you, everybody.